I think we'll go ahead and get started if everybody could have their seat, please.
I'm warm, like I now, I'm warm.
Oh, that's amazing, yeah.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of February fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the door at the back of the room. If you park in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. The planning commission action is final on the following items, 1.4 Special Permit 16009, 4.1D Preliminary Platte Number 16007, and 4.2B Special Permit Number 1995B. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the planning commission to the city council by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within fourteen days following the action of the planning commission. The planning commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the city council. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February first, two thousand seventeen. May I have a motion?
So moved, Edgerton.
Second, Beckius.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Epstein.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Weber?
Epstein.
And Hove?
I abstained, too.
Okay. Did, those that abstained, did they read the minutes? Did you read the minutes?
I didn't get to.
I didn't read the minutes, but I watched the hearing.
You can vote for it.
I could. Would that be enough, or do you need another one yet?
I need another one yet. We'll have to carry these forth to the next meeting, or if.
Your call, Tracy. What do you want to do?
She needs two.
Oh, you need two?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, great, well, we'll wait for the next hearing.
Okay.
Next item of business is a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I'll ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section Three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, first I'd note that Commissioner Shear, although he's not present at today's hearing, has declared a conflict of interest on item 1.5, Street and Alley Vacation Number 17001, and item number, Agenda Item Number 1.6, Street and Alley Vacation Number 17002, which are included on today's consent agenda. First item is Comprehensive Plan Conformance Number 17001, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Nebraska Innovation Campus Redevelopment Plan. The redevelopment plan area includes approximately 1.2 acres, more or less. The amendment redefines the Phase One project area to reduce the overall size, including the removal of Lot One, Nebraska Innovation Campus First Edition, and also identifies Phase Two redevelopment area and a three-story office building project of approximately eighty thousand square feet on property generally located to the east of the southeast corner of Transformation Drive and the Twenty-first Street intersection. The redevelopment plan area is adjacent to the University of Nebraska-Lincoln City Campus and includes the former Nebraska State Fair Park. The boundaries are generally located from North Antelope Valley Parkway to North Twenty-seventh Street between Salt Creek and the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad corridors. Next item is Annexation Number 17001, to annex the property at 2101 and 2111 West Van Dorn Street, consisting of approximately 2.07 acres, generally located southwest of South Cottington Avenue and West Van Dorn Street. Next item is Special Permit Number 872I for modification to Special Permit Number 872, to adjust the sign requirements for special permitted uses to allow for increased sign area and to permit allowed signs within the front yard and property generally located southeast of South Eighty-fourth Street and Van Dorn Streets. Next item is Special Permit Number 16009 for the construction of a carport on property generally located at 1801 Kings Highway. And this is final action on this item unless appealed to the city clerk within fourteen days of the planning commission's action. Next item is Street and Alley Vacation Number 17001, to vacate a portion of the northeast corner of the intersection of South Canopy Street and N Street right-of-way, generally located at the northeast corner of South Canopy Street and N Street. And the final item on, under consent, is Street and Alley Vacation Number 17002, to vacate the easternmost four feet of South Twentieth Street from M Street to N Street right-of-way, generally located at South Twentieth Street between M and N Streets. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on these consent agenda items?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Doesn't appear to be. I entertain a motion.
So moved to approve the items on the consent agenda. Beckius?
Second.
Weber? Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I'll now ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received from the applicant prior to this meeting.
Okay, we did receive a request on behalf of the applicant for an additional two-week deferral on text, it's item 5.1 on today's agenda, text amendment number 16020, amending Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code by amending Section 27.622.100C2 to modify the front yard and side yard setbacks for car sales.
I entertain a motion.
Move deferral. Corr?
Second. Beckius?
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Washington?
Epstein.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there anyone wishing to testify on text amendment 16020 rather than waiting until March first? Doesn't appear to be. We will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation to applicant, will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person should state their name and address, shall have, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you'll have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing.
Okay, there's four associated items, and I will note again that Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on these four associated items. Item 4.1A is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 16006, to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by changing the future land use plan to modify growth tiers and future land use. Next item is Annexation Number 16015, to annex approximately thirty-five point five five acres, more or less, on the associated property, which is North Seventh Street and Alvo Road. Item 4.1C is Change of Zone Number 16041, from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District. And Item 4.1D is Preliminary Platte Number 16007, to create one hundred and forty-five single-family lots and three outlots with waivers to the transfer of wastewater from one drainage basin to another and pedestrian ways for blocks over one thousand feet in length, all located generally at North Seventh Street and Alvo Road. I will note that on the preliminary plat, this is final action by the planning commission unless appealed to the city clerk within fourteen days of today's action. Are there any exporte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none. Andrew?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Department. So this is four related applications. If we look on here, they're located Alvo, North Seventh Street, this is Cooser Elementary right here, and I'll just briefly walk through each of the applications. The first one is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So this is the site in question. The lower portion is Tier One, which is the more immediately developable land. The northern piece here is identified as Tier Three, which would typically be fifty-plus years out. This line here is the future service limit. It's based on sewerability, gravity sewer basins. The applicant has provided a grading plan that shows that they're going to be able to provide gravity sewer up in this northern area. So because of that, it would be appropriate to move that area to Tier One. Tied to that is the future service limit boundary change, and again, that is because the gravity sewer, sewerability has been pushed further to the north. And then again, tied to that is the future land use map change. The Tier Three area was agricultural, moving that to urban residential. The next item is the change of zone, which again is the same area. It's thirty-five acres. Assuming the comp plan amendment goes through, that area would be identified as future urban residential. The change of zone is for R3 residential, so that would be appropriate. The annexation as well is the exact same boundary. Again, with the comp plan amendment, it would become Tier One, Priority A, so that would be appropriate for annexation. Final item is the preliminary plat. It has a slightly expanded boundary over on the east. It includes a few lots from Cooser Edition, which was a previous preliminary plat. This plat is about thirty-seven acres, includes one hundred and forty-five residential lots. This is the proposed plat here. A few things to note with it, there would be a phasing plan to address street paving and access. They could do one hundred lots with these, these two accesses here would be the initial access points. And then an additional thirty-four lots, once Cooser Drive here is paved to Seventh, and then Seventh would be paved up to Alvo, there would be a roundabout built right here. That roundabout would be reimbursable with directed impact fees. And then this final portion of North Seventh would be paved when these lots abutting North Seventh are platted. Couple things to talk about with this one, traffic calming is something we were concerned about with this development. There's, North Seventh Street here is actually completely straight for a whole mile between Fletcher and Alvo. When you have a long, straight street like that, without a lot of obstacles, it can create the illusion of safety, and people tend to speed in those situations. So we are recommending traffic calming near the intersection of Cooser Drive or at the intersection of Cooser Drive and Seventh, and then Haggard Street and Seventh as well. We feel that should be paid for by the developer. These are local streets. Legends Edition wouldn't be creating all of the traffic on Seventh Street, but they would be creating a lot of that traffic. And probably most importantly is that these traffic calming measures would be put in specifically for the safety of residents in Legends Edition. There's quite a few, well, there's ten lots platted right along Seventh where people would be backing out on the Seventh Street, so slower traffic would be a benefit to them. There's going to be quite a few people turning out on Cooser Drive, turning out on Haggard Street, who, if not for Legends Edition, those people wouldn't be there turning out. So we feel for the benefits of the safety of residents in Legends Edition. This traffic calming is important. One other item is the pedestrian easements. They asked to waive, so for blocks over a thousand feet in length, pedestrian easements are required. This plat shows four blocks that are over a thousand feet in length. The applicant is requesting to waive the pedestrian easement requirements for all those blocks. Two of the blocks here and here, we feel those, the waiver would be appropriate. Down here, Charleston Heights is already platted and there's no easements, so if you had an easement here, it would just go nowhere. On the north, there's the topography that would make it tough to put a pedestrian easement mid-block. In addition, I mean, this area north, it'll be a long time before that develops. Two other blocks over a thousand feet are these two. Kind of have a crude graphic here to show what we're talking about. Cooser Elementary is right here, right next to where Legends would be. So we are recommending that a pedestrian easement be placed here through these two blocks, connecting onto this street, which would provide a pretty clear pedestrian connection straight to Cooser Elementary. It would be used, kids going to school as well, there's a playground right here. So we think this pedestrian connection would get a lot of use and is important. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Andrew?
Can you give me some examples of the traffic calming devices that you would like to see on Seventh Street there?
Yeah, so there's a variety of them, and if we want to get into details, we can bring someone from Public Works to talk about it. But something like a traffic circle, chicanes where something, a barrier comes out and narrows the road, speed tables, you know, you go over a hump, something like that. There's, there's a lot of different possibilities with a lot of different costs. I don't know the cost, but I would think some of those would be fairly inexpensive.
Thank you. So am I right that the entrances into Legends are off of North Eleventh? Is that correct?
The initial ones will be, right here will be the first two.
Okay.
Initial entrances.
Other questions? Thank you. Applicant? Not at this point, not, we'll allow you to come up in a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, Mark Hunziker appearing on behalf of the developer. We really have, I think, everything, we're in agreement with everything that's been said so far except one item, and that is item 1.1.12 on the preliminary plat staff report, which requires us to show traffic calming on North Seventh Street to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department. There is no design standard in the street designs, there is no standard in the street design standards which requires traffic calming on any residential street. We don't disagree that there may be some tendency for traffic to move a little quicker on a, on a mile-long local street, but that street will have driveways on it, and it'll be a lot like South Street, A Street, Twenty-seventh Street, Thirty-third Street, you name it, the section line or half-section line roads within the city where you have driveways coming out onto the, onto the major street, and those are major streets, not, not local streets. This is a local street that'll have a twenty-five mile-an-hour speed limit, and this developer, actually neither this developer nor the developer to the south created this street. It's an old county road. It's pre-existing, it's straight and it's long, and we understand that it's, the preference is to have a little bit of a break in local streets to slow down traffic, but it is not the responsibility of this developer to assume the cost of putting in traffic calming on a local street just because it seems to be desirable when it's not part of the design standards that are required for subdivisions or construction of streets in Lincoln. So we would ask you to remove that condition of approval. It was not required of Charleston Heights, the subdivision to the south, and it's the same Seventh Street today as it was when Charleston Heights was approved. Let's try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Do you know if Charleston Heights has driveways backing out on the Seventh?
I don't know if they do. If they do, they, I don't believe they do yet. I don't know if they have any preliminary platted that way. And at this point, as you, as you know, our phasing plan that was required and mentioned earlier brings those lots on Seventh Street in our final phase, and there's, of course, a reason for that. We can't plat these lots under the conditions of approval, which we've agreed to, until Seventh Street is paved. So we're going to have to put sewer water, paving, sidewalks, et cetera, in a street along all of these lots that front on Seventh before we can final plat these lots, and we only get lots on one side of it. So it makes it a very expensive proposition for those lots, and those will definitely be the very last ones done and may not get done for a long period of time. The way this condition's drafted, we're asked to sign a blank check to the Public Works Department to do whatever they want whenever that happens, and we think that's a little unreasonable.
Dean?
So you're objecting not so much to the calming as to the cost to the developer? Is that right?
I think, you know, if the Public Works Department wants us to do that and is willing to share in the cost of doing that, we don't have any objection to the traffic calming at all. In fact, we agree that it's probably a good idea in this location, it's just shouldn't be the developer, this developer's responsibility to assume all the cost.
So you're willing to share?
You know, depending on what that amounts to. We don't know yet what the traffic calming devices may be that they require.
Saunders?
This may be for Public Works, but if you know, can you tell me, I understand that Seventh isn't paved right now, but does this, does Seventh only go one more mile, or is it only straight for the next mile?
That's testing my memory. I know it's, it runs for at least a mile from Alvo south. I don't recall if it goes further south.
And does it go north? How much farther north?
It goes north, then it goes south about another half mile.
Okay.
Mark, have you done any studies on what the possible cost would be for traffic calming, or have you looked at that at all?
We don't know what, I mean, there, as was mentioned earlier, there are different kinds of traffic calming devices, some of which are pretty expensive and some maybe not so much. We don't know which ones are going to be chosen, and at that, at the time those lots get platted, we may be five to ten years down the road, and we don't know whether the people who are now contemplating one type of traffic, traffic calming, may change their mind and do something else by that time. That's the problem with writing these prospective blank checks.
Anybody else?
And the developer's comfortable with the pedestrian walkway discussion?
Yes, the two that he mentioned that he's recommending waivers are really, one would be a complete waste of time, the other would be on a grade that would be such that it would be impossible to meet the ADA standards.
Got it, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? We're talking about all four of these items together at once. Anyone here wishing to testify in support? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to these items? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Susan McIntosh, and I live right on the corner there of Seventh and Alvo.
Could you give us your address?
Yes, seventy-three oh one North Seventh.
Thank you.
And I guess one of my questions was, are you talking about putting in entrance streets into the neighborhood off of Alvo?
No.
No, so they'd all be on Seventh Street? Okay, and so I guess then my question is, yeah, how does this road work? I mean, is it, are you just going to pave Seventh Street? You know, leave it as it is, basically, or, you know, put the sidewalk over on the new development side? Yeah, you know, how does this work? How does this affect me, I guess, is what I want to know.
We, we can ask them when they come back up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you have any other questions in the meantime?
Well, I guess, yeah, my other question is, yeah, and I think you said this, but tell me again, what timeframe are we looking at for my peace and tranquility to end?
We will ask that question.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Staff, Andrew, we might have some questions for you. Anyone have questions for Andrew?
No, mine are really to Public Works, and I think Tracy.
I have a couple. Do you know the speed limit, and this might be a Public Works, what's the speed limit on North Seventh right now?
I think it's twenty-five miles an hour. I mean, it would be a local street with this, so I would presume twenty-five miles an hour.
So even though it feels more like a country road, it's still twenty-five miles per hour?
Yeah, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure, I don't know.
Okay. I'm wondering, and I'm not sure if you're going to know this one either, but that development to the south doesn't have driveways that are coming out onto Seventh Street, or is it?
There's none platted right now, but.
It's not even platted yet?
Yeah.
But you said it was platted because that's why we don't have a sidewalk on that block.
Are we talking about Charleston Heights?
Yeah, right down to the south there.
Oh, it's, the CUP's been approved, but it hasn't been final platted, so there's not driveways on there right now, is what I'm saying. But it's, the plan has been approved.
So that means you don't know if the driveways are going to come out on North Seventh, or if they're going to be like on an internal road?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I believe they are, but.
The development to the south is called Charleston Heights, and it was approved in the future to have lots similar to this, that have lots that need to take their driveway access to Seventh Street, so they'd have houses that, the similar circumstance, their driveways, they'd have to back out onto Seventh Street as well. The developer is working generally east to west on that development, and would have similar circumstances this one.
If that's going to be a really, really busy road, why, why are we having driveways on that road? I mean, I'd imagine that eventually that's going to be a busy road.
Well, it's a internal street within the larger subdivision. It's not set up to be an arterial street.
Even though it's a mile long?
Correct. And so, in discussing it with the applicant, the applicant actually looked at alternatives that might have bent the road through the subdivision. However, there are a few houses on the west side of Seventh Street that take access to Seventh Street, and so he would have to work with those owners, and they were not interested in having the road bent. So they have to work with the existing circumstance, which is you have a street here that has some similarities to like a Randolph or a South Street or an A Street, maybe not so much A, but more Randolph in the south, the half-section line, where you have houses and things that are backing out onto the street, and our goal is to try to allow for that access, but just to keep the speeds lower, because when it's a long, straight street, people feel much more comfortable in picking up their speed, even though people are backing out.
Is the developer to the south required to have traffic calming?
No, at the time that that was approved, that was an oversight, we didn't require anything in Seventh Street.
Any other questions?
Is anyone from Public Works here?
Yeah. Yep.
Bob Simmering from Public Works.
Hi, I'd like to know a little bit about the calming that you might look for, the traffic calming, what are the options there? And, and then I, I think just the issue of all of these driveways that will back out onto Seventh Street. I understand that it, it may be envisioned as a local road at twenty-five miles an hour, but even South Street's not twenty-five, it's, it's thirty-five, and I think the fact that I can drive down South Street a couple days a week and see the police department setting up little dragnet's tells me people aren't doing thirty-five.
It's very possible.
It's very possible. I would compare it more to something like maybe South Thirty-second Street where it is residential all up and down the street. And people do back onto the street, but again, you do see the police park there occasionally ticketing people. One of the, I guess, benefits of having the driveways go onto the street and there will also be street parking allowed there is those actually act as some traffic calming in and of themselves. So, there is some reasonable benefit to that. As far as what Public Works looks for at traffic calming, that would be at Couger and Seventh, the highest degree we would ask for would be a traffic circle. There could be other items considered and I think Andrew listed those, whether it be platforms or nodes coming out at the intersection, something to pinch it down and give people some idea that there is a restriction ahead.
Is there a way to quantify the cost of something like that to say it's not going to be more than this so that the developer has some?
I'm not prepared to give a cost estimate on that. I don't know if the engineer for the developer has looked into that at all. He has not.
But it's something that could be done in the, you know.
It could be done, yes.
Could be prepared?
Yes.
Yeah, I should clarify the point where we said it was, it should be to the SaaS faction of Public Works is really to provide flexibility. If the applicant has concerns about the unknown, we could delay this and work out a specific traffic calming measure for those spots and include that as a condition.
Other questions?
Are there other areas where you've required the calming and who's paid for them at that point?
I'm not aware of areas where we've had the developer do it on the local street unless they were actually building that street at the time. In many cases, the traffic calming came along as an afterthought when we realized there was a problem there. And I would point out something like Williamsburg where there's the trail crossing, there's traffic calming there. That was an after the fact.
Didn't we just require Costco to put in traffic calming on, and isn't that a local street on the one that goes up by the school?
Planning would have to remind us of that?
I don't think so.
I thought they were putting that wishbone in or whatever you guys call it.
I think that would, I.
Pork chop?
David Carey with the Planning Department, I think we would consider that more of the, how the access itself is treated, not really traffic calming. That was more directional than traffic. Traffic calming is more of the, just to really affect the speed on whatever street you're talking about.
But we also required them to put some because of the bike path long.
Yeah, at the entrance points.
It's on their property, though.
At the entrance points, that was a part of that agreement, but again, they're a little bit different. Apples and oranges because we're talking about the public street versus an access drive.
But we did require them to pay for it.
On their own property.
On their own property, yeah.
Other questions? Dean?
And we're talking five to 10 years before this comes about? Is that what I heard Mr. Hansiker say?
It'd be on their schedule, but yeah, that sounds like what their plan is, yeah.
Um, did we make sure and get Ms. McIntosh's questions answered? She wanted to know like how far out, I know timeframe, but maybe we need to ask the applicant that, but what was her other question?
Well, hers about impacts to neighbors. She wanted to know when.
When it would happen.
When it would happen, when, you know, her peace and quiet, I think, is how she phrased it, would be affected.
That'd be something for the applicant.
Yeah, I think timing would be better for the applicant.
Anyone else? Thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
Mr. Chairman, to address the question about the access onto Seventh Street first, the two access points for streets onto Seventh Street would be here, which would be just north, I believe, of this lady's driveway. And the other one would be down at this point. And we will probably be working here to get this paved and this access and this roadway completed within two years or less. As far as this one out to Seventh Street and the, and these lots, it could be a long time. Because as I mentioned, those are, those are going to be very expensive lots to develop and probably not, well, they will definitely be the very last ones developed. Now, as to, as to the traffic calming, again, I've never seen this done on a local street. And yet, as, if this street gets built and these lots are platted, it will have a sewer in it, it will have water in it, and it will be possible, whether it's likely or not, I think it's unlikely, given the ownership on this side of the road. Because we've talked with Mr. Keen, who owns this property, he has absolutely no intention of developing his property. But there is a possibility of lots being platted all along the west side of this road once there's sewer and water in it. Even though they're, they're a little bit low for gravity sewer, individual lots can pump into the sewer out in front of them. So, there could be lots. I doubt whether there will be, but it's, it is a possibility. And as you, as you know, there are multiple locations within the city where local streets have driveways out on both sides in, on streets that have higher speed limits than this probably will.
Other questions?
I don't know who to ask this to, maybe Planning, but is it standard to require or would it be standard to require calming to be paid for now if the development, development wasn't going to be done until five to 10 years or is, is that standard? Maybe it's Public Works. I don't know who to answer.
Well, I'll let Steve talk.
There's two things here. This, the condition as proposed is a condition saying you need to put together all the final plans now before you do your first final plat. So, what we're, what our thought was is that whatever those two measures would be or measure, you would work that out with Public Works now. That would be the final approved plan. We'd mark those plans now. And then as the developer final plats this subdivision of a hundred and forty-some lots in additions of 20 or 30 or 40 lots at a time over the number of years, you then follow that approved plan. So, they wouldn't have to build any of these measures now, but they would be required to sit down with Public Works, figure out what are the two items. And so, if they want to know exactly what those are before this preliminary plat is approved, you could delay this item two weeks. We could sit down with them and work out, yes, it's going to be this and that. We could also discuss the sharing part of it and see if we can come back to you with some kind of an agreement on if they want to have those specific items known now before they're approved. The way we had drafted it was that they would sit down after this approval and work out with Public Works what the measures would be done. And those would be shown in the final approved plans so that five years from now, there was no question as to what was going to be built. It was shown on the final approved plans now.
Thank you.
Well, I like the idea of the planning to be done upfront and there being an agreement, but I'd like to know if the applicant likes the idea of delaying action for a few weeks.
We absolutely do not want to see a delay. And as to the planning of these improvements, we've been trying for three weeks to get an idea from Public Works, exactly what they had in mind. And we haven't had anything except an email today indicating that they really don't have a plan yet. And frankly, when you don't have design standards that require these things and you impose these kinds of conditions on people, it really leads to a very ad hoc kind of process and arbitrary decision-making. Such as the project immediately abutting this project to the south, not having this requirement imposed, but oh, wait, we should have done, we thought of something new this time. Here, we want it even though it's not part of the design standards. We would ask that you remove this condition if between now and the time this gets to the City Council, Public Works has an idea that they want to, they want to share with us about what their, what their thinking is on what they would like to see and how much it might cost and how much they're willing to contribute to that cost. We're certainly willing to talk to them about it, but we don't want to delay and we really would like you to remove that condition. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tracy, do you?
I could have a question that I'm not sure if it's like a legal question or I'm not really sure who to ask.
Well, why don't we ask it and then we can find out, figure it out.
Can we use impact fees from this development to help pay for those traffic calming devices?
No.
Got my answer.
Sorry, so it's available for everyone.
Those are arterial street impact fees. And arterial street impact fees legally can only be used for arterial street improvements. This is a local street, so it doesn't qualify.
Thank you.
Mark, anything else you'd like to say or anything else you'd like to share? Okay, we have four items. You want to call them?
I will call them separately, yes. First item is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 16006 to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan by changing the Future Land Use Plan to modify growth tiers and future land use on property generally located at North Seventh Street and Alvo Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move Approval, Core.
Second, Finnegan.
Okay. Why don't we discuss these all four together if that's okay? And anybody want to start?
I'll start.
Sure.
Um, I agree that it looks like it was an arbitrary decision to make one developer pay for something which a previous developer didn't have to pay for when they came forward. I think it's also a good idea for these kinds of things to be shared between the developer and the city in the future. And I would hope that the design standards get amended so that we don't have this situation the next time someone comes forward.
Other thoughts?
I'll just say, I think, as I understand it, will, I'm going to support the first three items and then the fourth one. I hope, I would support that we remove item 1.1.12 on that item because I do agree. I think a mile-long street, in my opinion, the developer of that area should not have to bear the cost of these traffic calming issues right there. So, Jerry, please call the vote on this item.
Okay, this is for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment 16006. Becky, yes?
Abstain.
Or?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero with one abstention. Six to zero with one abstention. Okay, next item is Annexation Number 16015 to Annex Approximately 35.55 Acres More or Less on Property Generally Located at North Seventh Street and Alvo Road. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertained a motion.
Move Approval, Core.
Second, Weber.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, Becky, yes?
Abstain.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero with one abstention. Okay, the next item is Change Zone Number 16041 from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District on Property Generally Located at North Seventh Street and Alvo Road. Staff recommendation is for approval.
So moved, Washington.
Second, Finnegan.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Becky, yes?
Abstain.
Or?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Her, or, I'm sorry, Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero with one abstention. Okay, Item 4.1D is preliminary plat Number 16007 to create 145 single-family lots and three outlots with waivers to the transfer of wastewater from one drainage basin to another and pedestrian ways for blocks over 1,000 feet in length on property generally located at North Seventh Street and Alvo Road. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the city clerk within 14 days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertain a motion.
Are there, I'm, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Entertain a motion.
I would ask that the motion be approved with an amendment striking 1.1.12, show traffic calming on North Seventh Street.
Second, Edgerton.
Any discussion?
Um, yeah, I'm going to say, I'm debating on this, but, so, here's my line of thought. I'm thinking the developer's already having to pave North Seventh. Is it really going to cost that much more to add a couple of traffic calming devices like a speed bump thing? I don't know how much these things cost. So, that's just something I wanted to get on the record.
Anyone else?
I'm torn also. I really wish we could have found time for the developer and the city to come together to decide or to talk about the sharing cost. It seems to me that it would have been more productive to have that done before you came forward today. At the same time, this is not an arterial, it's a local street. We haven't seen it done before and that causes me some concern, so.
Anyone else?
I think if they had time, I agree, Dean, if they had time to figure out the solution, is it a speed bump or is it a circle?
A roundabout, absolutely.
Is it, I mean, if we need the roundabout, it's much more expensive than a speed bump. It would have been better to have a solution to the problem before today, but given where we are today, I don't want to hem the developer in with these costs by themselves.
But I wish the developer would have agreed to a delay.
Yes, that would have been nice.
Okay, Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for conditional approval as amended. Becky, yes?
Abstain.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero with one abstention. Okay, moving on. Item 4.2A, Change Zone Number 0801A to add a maximum of 275 apartment units to the commercial center and reduce the overall commercial area with a development plan which proposes to modify standards of the underlying zoning district on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Item, the associated item is Item 4.2B, Special Permit Number 1995B to convert the apartment area to single-family attached and townhome units with waivers to block length, lot area, lot width, and setbacks on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street. This is final action on this special permit unless appealed to the city clerk within 14 days. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none.
Okay, I do also need to note that Commissioner Shear, although not present, did declare a conflict of interest on these two items.
Andrew, it's your day today.
Yeah, Andrew Theroff, Planning Department. So, as Jerry mentioned, this is a combined community unit plan and planned-in development we'll talk about together. The area is Northwest 48th, West Holdridge. I think the easiest way to talk about this will be go and look at what's approved today on that site. So, this area is the CUP, the Hub Hall Heights CUP. The area, the area in purple is the PUD, Hub Hall Commercial Center. Right now, it is approved for 752 units in this CUP portion, including 400 multifamily units. The PUD includes 70,000 square feet of commercial. So, with this new proposal, the apartments that were here would move over to the corner here. There are 400 approved here, it'd be up to 275 units here on the corner. The apartments here would be replaced with 93. The apartments here would be replaced with 93 single-family attached residential units. So looking at the, this is the CUP portion, the Hub Hall Heights CUP in the southeast corner. It is 93 attached single-family units. There's a couple waivers to discuss here. I should note, both of them are already more or less approved with the CUP. These new waivers are just modifications of those, updating some block numbers, things like that, because there are some new blocks. One is a waiver to the lot area and minimum width of these lots. The other one is a reduction of the front yard from 20 feet to 10 feet on these lots to the south. One thing to note with that front yard reduction, the garage would still need to be 20 feet back from the lot line, and there still need to be 22 feet between the garage door and the sidewalk to provide parking on the driveway. One other thing to note with this one, this portion of West Holdridge, well, all of West Holdridge here is gravel today. The portion adjacent to this CUP would remain gravel, probably for a while. The developer won't be paving this anytime soon. So, to kind of address that, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer here provided between the road and the closest residential lots, about 70 feet. So, it's possible there could be dust concerns, so a condition of approval is that any dust complaints from this CUP would be the responsibility of the homeowners association. Moving west, this is the planned unit development. It was the Hub Hall Commercial Center. Now it would be called Woodside Village. As I mentioned, today it's approved for 70,000 square feet of commercial. With this new proposal, it would be 275 apartment units with 12,000 square feet of commercial. They have a small commercial building up here. They're requesting one waiver. These two buildings, the maximum height is 40 feet. These two buildings would have a height of 48 feet. We feel this waiver is appropriate. They're about 100 feet from the closest residential lot. Couple other things to mention with regards to the residential. There's a 50-foot rear yard setback here. No buildings can be within 50 feet of those residential lots. You can have parking in the rear yard, so they are showing some parking that's within that 50-foot setback. There would be a few different screening requirements that would apply here. One is the parking lot screening, 0 to 3 feet, 90% screen. There's also commercial adjacent to residential, there's a screening standard for that, which is, I believe, 0 to 10 feet. And then the apartments have their own screening standard, which is, the typical standard is, I believe, 6 to 15 feet of screening, so those are trees we're talking about. And in a CUP, if there's a height waiver for an apartment, there's some additional screening that's required. So those would apply in this situation. This portion of West Holdridge Street would be paid, or would be paved, it would be paid for with directed impact fees. They'd be providing a small standard roundabout right here. So, when looking at these apartments, the answer is, would be here. You think most traffic would probably go here, or here on Northwest 48th. I don't think, well, it doesn't appear there'd be much traffic that would actually be going through the neighborhood itself. Do we have any questions?
Questions for Andrew?
Could you put the CUP aerial back up on there for a second?
The aerial?
Yeah, the proposed, sorry, the proposed single-family. Is that not showing? No, maybe it is. Is that showing the additional parking requirement there?
Oh yeah, yeah. I should mention that. So for any lots less than 35 feet in width, per the ordinance, every two units needs one off-premises parking stall. With what they submitted, they're proposing parking lot here to address these lots, and we think that's just fine. They're also showing diagonal parking here to provide parking for these lots here. We felt that didn't really make a lot of sense. That's pretty far from some of these lots. So we've actually talked to the applicant about this, and they're okay with showing parking closer to these units over here. It's probably going to be feasible with even just on-street parking, so.
Thank you.
And they won't have to widen that street or anything to accomplish that goal?
Nope.
Off from?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Andrew?
So Andrew, if I'm reading this appropriately, we're changing really what was planned on kind of more the corner part of the, of Holdridge and 48 there. It was more commercial, and now we're going to residential more so.
Yeah.
And so, the residential screening for multiple-family dwellings abutting up to residential is more intense than if it would have remained commercial.
It's different. I don't know if I'd say it's more intense, but yes, there's a comparable screening standard, whether it's commercial or apartments. The apartment screening is more elevated in the form of trees. The commercial screening, generally you can meet that with a fence or something like that.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Applicant?
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Gergen with Clark Anderson Partners, representing the owner of these properties. Unfortunately, I am here in front of you converting commercial to residential. If it was our desire, we would have commercial on this corner, and our impact fees would be paying for West Holdridge Street. We worked diligently with the City of Lincoln, Public Works, and planning to find a way to pay for West Holdridge Street to gain access for this development. Our conversion of commercial to apartments, and then apartments to townhomes just barely pays, our impact fees just barely pay for what is going to be required to pave West Holdridge Street. So we think this is a benefit to the development, but also the whole entire Hub Hall Heights Community Unit Plan to have another access out to Northwest 48th Street. We've worked with the city staff and read their comments, agree with their comments on the PUD and on the CUP. We do have one motion on 1.5 on the CUP. It reads, "Provide dimension for West Holdridge Street right-of-way. There should be at least 66 feet from centerline to accommodate the street plus trail." We don't disagree with that. However, we are providing a 20-foot outlot adjacent to West Holdridge Street to allow for additional landscaping for trees and pine trees to try to knock down as much dust on West Holdridge Street from the gravel road as possible. We'd like to amend that to just provide dimension for West Holdridge Street right-of-way to provide, boy, do you remember, Andrew? I believe we just have enough width in that right-of-way to provide for that trail.
Yeah, so if we're looking at 1.5, 66 feet would change to 60 feet, and then there would be a new sentence at the end saying, "A six-foot easement, a six-foot pedestrian easement should be provided in the outlot directly to the north for a trail." And, yeah, city staffs reviewed that, and we support that.
You support it, you said?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does that encompass parks and rec as well? Okay.
I'd be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions for Tim?
Yeah, I have a question for Tim. Could you speak to a little bit about the parking issue that you've been working with on the city in terms of directly impacting Fraser Drive?
Sure. I'll bring up the kind of an overall aerial. So I think we can accommodate it in numerous other ways. What we were going to do is, the plan is submitted right now, showing these lots facing that. We may lose a lot and turn these lots so that they face the street, so we can then provide on-street parking. What we have is, when we have corner lots, the driveways are only facing one side of the street, and that provides for on-street parking at this point, as well as on-street parking all on those two sides. We also feel that, we feel that if we do not meet the parking requirements, that we can remove one of our lots here and make these all lots a little bit wider to accommodate more parking on that side of the street as well. So we feel comfortable with the city's conditions with the parking.
Thank you. Anything else?
I did have a, so I just want to clarify on that right-of-way issue, because I know I was kind of questioning that when I read through the report. So, because you have that 20-foot of landscape buffer in there, and then the 50-foot of open space, that covers enough right-of-way for, or enough space for the trail and the right-of-way and everything.
Yeah, so I'll zoom in even further. So what we are dedicating is 60-foot of right-of-way from the centerline to the proposed right-of-way. And then we have another additional 20-foot outlot, which will be our landscaping screening to help knock down that dust, and that's where we will be meandering a trail, maybe all through, in and out of the right-of-way and into our landscape outlot.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
I have one for staff.
Okay.
Andrew, I know that you talked a little bit about the height, and I noticed in the comments from the Airport Authority that they talked about, the structures will need the height permits because it's so close to the, but then there's also this note on there that it says, they need to have an airspace review completed by the FAA. I don't think I've seen that before, so can you kind of tell me what that's about?
That's a newer requirement that the Airport Authority's been requiring with any developments anywhere near the airport. They have a method to figure out exactly where it is, but it's, I don't know the details of it, but it's something that's submitted to the FAA, and they basically say it's okay or not.
Do we anticipate that the height of these buildings is going to cause any problems with that at this point?
No, the Airport Authority's pretty protective about their height, and they've said this is okay at 48 feet, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else for Andrew?
Oh, and one other thing I just wanted to get on the record. So this is actually going to be less dwelling units than the previous plan.
Yes, so the old plan, the whole Hub Hall Heights area was 752 units with 70,000 square feet of commercial. This new plan would be 707 units with 12,000 square feet of commercial.
Thank you.
On this project, on this project, we received a letter of opposition, and I wanted to know if this person, if there'd been any conversation, or if you feel like their issues had been addressed or were, did not need to be addressed.
In terms of, I guess I should say, we haven't had any conversation with them. We got back to them and said, "Thank you for the comment. If you have any questions, you can contact us." We're generally not concerned about the compatibility of apartments for single-family. I mean, it's residential and residential, so. I don't want to say they don't need to be addressed, but we're not concerned about those comments.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Applicant rebuttal? Anything you want to say?
Commissioner Washington, I'll just follow up on that question. We did send a letter out to the neighborhood president of the association stating our application. If you had any concerns or questions, to contact us. We did not get any return on that. We felt the email that was in from the abutting neighbor was, we'd probably have the same concerns or complaints from him if it was still commercial today. We would still, we're not asking to do anything more than what the commercial that's approved out there today would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to call these separately, Jerry?
Yes. Okay. 4.2A is Change of Zone Number 0801A to add a maximum of 275 apartment units to the commercial center and reduce the overall commercial area with a development plan which proposes to modify standards of the underlying zoning district on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertain a motion.
Move Approval Corps?
Second, Becky, yes?
Discussion?
I think that even though we are looking at changing this from a commercial use to a residential use, I still think it's a good use of the space. I think it's a good use of the hard corner, where I don't think a lot of single-family residences necessarily want to be located. I think this is a fair compromise and a good trade-off.
Others?
I think that since the overall density is going down, I think that that should help alleviate some concerns with the parking so close to Mr. Alder's property, and the screening should help alleviate some of that as well. And so I think, you know, just as Mr. Becky has said, it's a good development and a good change.
Anyone else?
I just agree with my fellow commissioners. I think the market dictates it makes more sense for residential at this point, so that's what we'll go with.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this will be for conditional approval. Becky, yes?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item is Item 4.2B, Special Permit Number 1995B to convert the apartment area to single-family attached and townhome units with waivers to block length, lot area, lot width, and setbacks on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street. This is final action by the Planning Commission. Unless appealed to the city clerk within 14 days, staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Want to-
You may have it, Mr. Becky.
I'll move approval, Becky.
Second, Washington.
Just point of, we did have an amendment to that. Do we want to add that amendment?
I'll move to amend the motion, and I think it's on 1.5, strike 66, and insert 60 feet. Is that what we're talking about?
The 5.1, Condition 5.1.
1.5.
Oh, it's 1.5.
Should I read it again?
I'm sorry, that's right.
Why don't you read it, Andrew?
Okay, so, "Provide dimension for West Holdridge Street right-of-way. There should be at least 60 feet from the centerline to accommodate the street plus trail. A six-foot easement in the outlot directly to the north should be added to accommodate a trail."
Thank you.
Friendly amendment to your motion.
Yes.
Okay, and you accept that?
I accept that second.
Any other discussion? Jerry, please call the vote.
Becky, yes?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next item is Item 4.2B, Special Permit Number 1995B to convert the apartment area to single-family attached and townhome units with waivers to block length, lot area, lot width, and setbacks on property generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street. This is final action by the Planning Commission. Unless appealed to the city clerk within 14 days, staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Want to-
You may have it, Mr. Becky.
I'll move approval, Becky.
Second, Washington.
Just point of, we did have an amendment to that. Do we want to add that amendment?
I'll move to amend the motion, and I think it's on 1.5, strike 66, and insert 60 feet. Is that what we're talking about?
The 5.1, Condition 5.1.
1.5.
Oh, it's 1.5.
Should I read it again?
I'm sorry, that's right.
Why don't you read it, Andrew?
Okay, so, "Provide dimension for West Holdridge Street right-of-way. There should be at least 60 feet from the centerline to accommodate the street plus
We're adjourned.